Yeah.
And my truck is the two, two thousand and three, two, four, six cup holders. Six cup holders now. Two that pop up, two that are there, and there's two beside me on the side for the, you know, the little people's bench in the back, cause a little door. I never update vehicles by used. Smarter.
The kids' wagons have a lot.
You can buy my ex-girlfriend.
The kids' wagons. Well, I guess. Carson's.
Where is it?
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the planning board meeting of February eight. I'm sorry, February, um.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Would you all please stand for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, um, it's like we have a full, well, we have a quorum this evening, and we also have, um, our members present. Um, I'll do the roll call of members. Michael Crotto, Chair.
Kimberly Queen, and Vice Chair.
Kate Stevens, Member.
Ron Stevens, Member.
Kevin Lynch, Selectment Rep.
Okay. Thank you. Um, this is probably a pretty light agenda this evening, not a lot, but I did wanna, I think, um, take the opportunity to, um, well, even before I get to that, um, I'll open it up to, um, to public comment for non-agenda items. Any members of the public who wish to speak on non-agenda items this evening? Hearing none, since I don't see anyone in the audience, I will close the public hearing on non-agenda items. Um. So, just let me get, pull up. Okay. Um, number one this evening, uh, discussing the next master plan chapter, uh, to update. So, we've completed the transportation chapter.
Yes.
That is done. And now, we are moving forward, uh, with a, uh, new chapter, um, to update. So, I guess the question is, where do we wanna go from here?
So, uh, ju- just as a reminder, if I could, just, you know, kind of going back within the past two, three years, uh, so we, we just did transportation, that was a, that was a big one. We, you know, we put a lot of time into that one. Uh, we've done vision and goals, we should do a brief update on vision and goals, um, just to reflect the changes that we've just done. Uh, but we did, we've done land use and population and housing, so those are also big ones. So, kind of, there's, there's, of course, we could do more, but there's four that we have traditionally done that, you know, need to be updated. Uh, economic development, uh, historic resources, um, and, uh, two pretty large ones, uh, national resources and community facilities. Uh, so, any of those would cer- would certainly be appropriate. I would also say, just, you know, for, for my bias, for what it's worth, um, i- it could be timely to do community facilities, um, mainly because, uh, we've now started the process of updating the capital improvements program. And those really should align. So. That one may make the most sense. Certainly, though, the other ones are, you know, uh, o- obviously need to be done as well.
Um, I would agree. I think now that we have the capital improvement committee, um, on board, that this would probably be a nice little segue into, uh, doing capital facilities and maybe focus on that and, uh, kind of, see how that, you know, interplays with what we're doing.
And it seems like there's some significant proposals out there that are really worth.
So, in terms of that, I mean, what would we like to see to get started with that? If we wanted to start that chapter, what would we be looking at in terms of, um, going, or starting to do it?
Uh, so, it's, it's, of course, it's been a while since it was last done. Um, I wanna say.
Two thousand and two.
Yes, I was gonna say, it's been seventeen, eighteen years, so, just as a starting point, we wanna update the inventory of what's out there now. Um, and, uh, so I think that's probably the, the most important thing. We can, we can do that, bring that, um, you know, back to you. And then, um, hopefully, not too far out in the future, we should have a sense of what the departments are proposing.
Right.
I think that's gonna be really significant to see. Some things I think we know.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that'll kind of give us a sense of, so now we know what's out there, we know, um, you know, what's being proposed in the short term. The other thing that, um, we do tend to look at in the community faci- facility section is kind of what are the standards? And so, we can also take a look at the different standards, uh, that have been used, you know, how many, you know, baseball diamonds, you know, little league fields you need per thousand, you know, that kind of a thing. Um, and, uh, so, we can take a look at some of those also, look at maybe what some other communities have done. Um, and, and this could be a great opportunity to get, you know, some, some public input, uh, you know, around some of the things that are being considered, uh, because they're gonna matter, I think, for, for a long time.
And our fire station still has the old one in that chapter where it's located.
Yeah.
The population statistics you've already done, can go in there.
We can roll those right in, yeah. Uh, and that's really important, too, on the needs side, so we can really start to align what's needed based on population. Hey, you know, when I say that, there's some conversation we can have also just kind of around standards and, and what we think makes sense. Of course, those change, too, naturally over time. And we can do a little bit of looking into, in some areas, what are other communities doing? And then, uh, my guess is, is that there, there are probably gonna be a few key things that we're gonna wanna dive into mu- much more deeply.
Does the board have anything that they wanna add on that?
I did send an email on two other chapters that I thought were interesting other towns were doing. I don't know if you see them in there. One was like, um, Nashville with their riverfront project. Not that we want to do that, but that, I allowed to talk about the town, uh, going around with that. And I think, let me see what the other email was, hold on. Did anybody see it for me from, it was what Amherst was doing or something? Hold on, let me get it. But then I went back and I, I agree, I saw community and facilities was old and the economic one was kind of rough, too. Let me just see what I sent. I sent it to everybody in the planning board. Uh, it was an energy action plan for Leidenboro, but it, but that was one of the new chapters we don't have, but then when I went back and saw what we had, maybe it does make sense to.
And those are things we could.
Do what we should with our facilities, yeah.
And, you know, those are definitely things we could do.
Um, I know that, um, Andrew Cutter, who's on the, um, the CIP, has working on putting together a visioning statement for the CIP committee.
Right.
Um, and I know members, uh, put some information into that, so we're actually developing that sort of a, a starting point, uh, for the project. I think we're gonna discuss that at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, so how do we make sure that it's cohesive with what the capital improvement plan is doing? Cause like, we're starting to see, right now, uh, you've got the CIP meetings, and then you have the REIT committee putting out articles about whether we want a new community center. It just kind of like came out of the blue, it felt like. So, I just wanna make sure that we are not doing anything that like surprises anybody, like, okay, maybe we come up with this idea, but then the capital improvement plan is moving like this way. You just have, as long as we can.
Well, I think, I mean, certainly.
Go a bit at the same time and stay in the same range.
Right. Um, well, I think, I mean, the master plan is certainly, um, different from the capital improvement plan. I think it's, there's more of, um, in terms of visioning and, uh, being able to see what, you know, uh, what people would like to see in which real, you know, the, the idea of encouraging things. Um, whereas the, the capital improvement plan is sort of, well, is this a needs-based or urgent-based for something specific, um, now? But, um, no, I understand what you're saying, yeah.
Okay, so master plan's more like, in ten years, we'd like to maybe do this, like, this is kind of like a vision of what, what we're going for. Capital improvement is more of what do we need to, how do we need to allocate our resources?
In, so, for example, we have, but like, for example, the fire station or something, we have something now that needs to be done, or we have a school that needs to be done. So, there's a specific, i- it is more specificity in terms of the, the current issue at stake, which is, you know, is there an urgency to?
Okay.
Whereas the, I think, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, I mean, but I, that's my understanding of what the master plan.
I, I think that's right. It's also gonna be a longer-term vision.
Yeah.
Uh, and it'll talk, you know, a- about the needs, the standards, the justification, but at the same time, I, I think, you know, we would wanna take that input, so we would, we would wanna get the input, um, that's, I mean, the departments are, are, are putting together the information for the CIP committee. So, that's really the same input that we would be getting, although we might go further. We'll, we will go, or time-wise, we'll, we'll go further. So, I, I, that's kind of why I thought it made sense to do it now, is cause we can get that input at the same time.
Okay.
And then, obviously, realistically, it'll be after town meeting when we start talking about future needs, for sure. So, at least we'll know what passes in terms of word articles now, but I think it's a great opportunity to have, you know, the conversations around things like, you know, future community centers, and, uh, we, we know there's a lot of talk about what's gonna happen school-wise. And if there's changes in the schools, what happens to one of the buildings, you know, those kinds of conversations. I think this is a great forum.
Okay.
You know, to have those kind of conversations.
Um, so do we need like a subcommittee or something, like we had for the, uh, community design? Chapter, or do we just wanna invite public input as we're developing it, like you did transportation?
I mean, yeah, I mean, you could certainly, I mean, you could probably, I mean, we obviously have public input, um, I mean, if there were people interested in doing a subcommittee, I mean, certainly welcome them to, you know, welcome it, but, um, that, yeah, I remember, yeah, and we had a couple of people come in for the, um, the, the design chapter. But, you know, I think, and plus, I mean, with the capital improvement committee, I think there's gonna be a lot of public hearings. So, there'll be a lot of opportunities for the public to come in and comment as well. As, and, and obviously, we can, you know, maybe, you know, do the same in, in terms of, you know, working on this. So, I think the, the, together, I think that'll be a good, um, you know, the good focus. Having both, you know, basing with the planning board and then having the CIP and working through, through that, so, but, yeah.
Okay.
And one other item that I'm curious about, as you look at the map of the town of Litchfield there, we, many years ago, we tried to look at the, the growth of this town, that's what the master plan was about. And we had the circumstantial highway at the time being a dream, and it still is a dream, but our town is based off that for affordability. Okay, to live here, cause we don't have much of a tax base unless it's residential homes. And that's the key point of this town, to stay afloat, too, keep the majority of it residential, I agree. But we need to work on what the state's gonna be doing as part of the master plan for this town as well. Okay, cause they own the land all the way through there that we can't touch. Okay, and it affects us here, what to do with the land, cause we can't do anything with it, so that's, that, that's a crunch. That was caused by somebody else's thoughts. When it was, our town was, when we did that, that map, and I was on the committee for that years ago, okay? I shouldn't say years, I'm youthful, okay, but that was part of it right there in the whole attempt of the master plan. Was to put that into play, cause that's part of the whole thing, to make it affordable here. Okay, and that's half the battle, cause we're talking, one of the things you're talking about tonight is affordable housing. Okay, this town's not known for affordable housing. Okay, and that's an issue. So, just bringing, bringing it up.
Used to be. Used to be, many years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
But that was put in a column that it's not gonna happen. It didn't think it was gonna happen with NRPC, right? Unless that, some things have changed.
I was just saying that there was a time when this was a town where people would come to start a family.
At one time it was, it sta- started out when the first, ever since they put the highway coming through, that's when this town started to grow. When I ninety-three went up through, that's when all the town started to grow through here. Okay, and that's created a crunch on the rest of us. So, basically, that's what we've tried to do, when we put this circumstantial and all that, their whole idea was to get some of the traffic out of this area, especially for Hudson and Nashville. And Nash was complaining about a traffic circle, and you cross the rib, the rib, the rib, the ribbon, now, that's gonna be an interesting thought. Okay, so, there's a lot of things that we gotta consider, consider, and the master plan, we, either we stick to it, or we start changing some of the stuff down there. Okay? But the state owns that land all the way through, so it's a given. It's a matter of when they're gonna give it.
Certainly something to take into consideration as we go forward.
Said to put a bridge at the north end of Manchester, would I be in the master plan?
But you, you are correct, because some of the NRPC meetings, we looked at that budget item. And it was in the column that it's not gonna likely happen.
Right.
And I don't know how, how long that's true, but you are correct, we are kind of in a, not a stalemate or deadlock, but we are at the mercy of the state.
We have a lot of land that's tied up, that could be used for something else.
But it's either go forward or make a decision.
Make a decision.
That's not my call, but I'm just saying.
You know?
But we are kind of held to that model.
That's your master plan, that's your thinking of it, that's the whole idea. So.
That's our, more about land use section, yeah.
Need some motels.
But there is a warrant article that may affect this also. I'm looking at the fire department, the service radio, not, not about the fire department itself, but some of the equipment being upgraded for, you know, the first responders, remember there was some of that?
That is another.
Yep, so that might affect this, too, cause I'm seeing it in here.
And there's, there's good politics on that, you recently, there was some discussion, where they're funded, okay? Town of Litchfield got whacked with PFOAs, so there's a huge cost there that's costing us, the taxpayers, you know, okay? Cut, because of that compound that everybody uses to cook on, but I'm just saying, okay? That's another matter that we're gonna look at, the legal part of that, that's my understanding. So, there's a lot of, if I, the fire department, I know they're gonna want this and that. The trucks are too old to be in the new barn. I don't know, okay? There's another matter there, you know?
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's, there's a lot of variables.
Yep.
I mean, things, yeah, I mean, they're definitely relevant.
And when we get to natural resources, that's, you know, the PFAS issue is definitely something that we'd be looking at.
Yeah, right.
And that, I, I went to an NRPC meeting a couple of years back, and it was in Hudson, and there was a lot of negativity towards that highway going through there. Hudson has a strong blockage, and I'll say on that, okay? That's all I can say, that's all I know.
They've got a lot of right-of-way, too.
You got it.
Lot of right-of-way sitting there.
Yep.
Interesting.
Okay, so I guess we'll, we'll probably wanna get started on that, uh, process, and, um, I know that the capital improvement committee is meeting in March now, um, and I think they, you know, there'll be some, there's a discussion around that, so we'll probably share that with the, you know, the board as we, we go forward and, you know, put some stuff together in the interim.
And they are public meetings, so, you know, board members who are interested.
Right, so, yeah, and if anyone wants to come for those meetings, that's definitely, um, that's, uh, what it's all about, so. Um, so the next item on the agenda for this evening was about the charrette to the west, two thousand and twenty. Um, this has to do with some sort of workforce housing coalition design. Did everyone have, would you, would you need to look at this? Does anybody have any comments about it? What's your think, what's the board's thinking on this? And maybe, I mean, Jay, if you wanna chime in on it, I.
Giddy in line, my, it's my understanding of this is that you, you, you look at it, so you look for funding. Some kind of funding pro- program for it.
Yeah.
That's basically, that, that, that's the crutch of it that I know right now. Am I correct?
That and zoning.
Zoning?
Yeah, there's a big focus on zoning.
Regarding densities and stuff like that.
But isn't the charrette, this particular thing is to get in line to try and get the grant for the charrette?
Yeah, so what, what they're calling for now is, uh, that this Sea Coast, uh, Alliance is working with the Regional Economic Development, you know, Council, the R E D C, and so the idea is, is they want, they're taking applications from communities, they'll come in and basically facilitate a charrette for free. Um, but it's competitive, so they're only gonna choose one community in this area. So, you know, the question is, is, is there an interest in, you know, seeing if, um, you know, Litchfield, uh, well, do we wanna do it? And if so, um, do we wanna file the application to do it? Um, I, I think their, their vision would be that, you know, this would be something where there would be interested citizens, so they would be able to get together, you know, a group of different people, stakeholders, to talk about how to make it happen. So, for it to be valuable, I think we, we would have to think.
Yeah.
There's an interest level.
Right.
Who's driving it? Is this the business community that is looking for workforce in the area?
I mean, potentially, I'm not really, I'm not very familiar with the Sea Coast, you know, Workforce Housing Alliance, i- i- if, so I, it's hard for me to speculate who they are, but I am, I mean, I'm imagining they're advocates for workforce housing, there are probably, um, and again, this is pure speculation, my part, but I would imagine that there's some developers who work in this space, uh, both for-profit and nonprofit. You know, uh, so groups like, we have Neighbor Works, you know, Southern New Hampshire, that's a nonprofit housing developer. Uh, I don't know that they're involved, but I would imagine that there, there are groups like that involved, and probably other stakeholders, but I'm not entirely sure.
One of the questions you're gonna have with workforce housing is density. Without subsurf, without public sewer, you're basing yourself on subsurface, and your density gets a little different with that, you got less per acre. Okay, that you can do. So, one of the problems with, you know, affordable housing like that is that you gotta look at the long-term master plan, I'm gonna go back to the master plan theory about getting sewer into certain sections of this town, which possibly that this could be done.
But what was the density on housing for older persons? Can't recall, it's tough on my head.
Oh, God, uh.
It was denser than?
Yeah, it's, you've got a lot of land mass for that, cause you gotta, you gotta have so, so much receiving area for your subsurface. I know your density is, is probably about five or six units maybe per acre, or, I mean, five or, or less. Okay, it's much less, okay, cause there's so many receiving.
Four, four acres.
I think that's four or something, but that's a big difference when you get into affordable hous- housing, you gotta look at the infrastructure for it, it'd be affordable. Okay, cause you don't want large layouts, that's a, that's a maintenance issue, a few, you know, for, so. This is, that's why you see in the inner ci- the, the neighboring cities and towns, you see multifamilies, but they got sewer. Okay, the sewer makes a big difference in water. There was talk here, when Frank Byer was on the board, okay, about making an, an, an inter- interminable agreement with the city of Manchester to run sewer down from the north end, and it's right there. Okay, they're running it into town and working into it. There's none on the south side of town near the Hudson.
Merrimack, no room.
The Merrimack one, uh, you have to cross the river. Okay, pump stations and everything else, that, that was talked about.
Yeah, Merrimack's got capacity, Hudson doesn't.
They have a lot of capacity there, the budget was a plan. They added to that because of the operations there.
Yeah, and then they changed their operations.
Correct.
Reducing the flow into that treatment, so, you know, so there's, there's a lot of potential there.
Yep.
But you have the density, because I had a recent call from a state rep about affordable housing. You have the density that we work with housing for older persons, you have the density that just went on Page Road, so.
We're basing it all off lea- leach costs.
Right, right, I understand that.
There's a big difference, that's why.
Right.
The cost is associated.
And the, the developer, I have, I said to the state rep, because land in Southern New Hampshire is expensive, you have to factor that in, what's going to be feasible to work with.
And that's why you're gonna look at your tax base, not only the residential side, but you're gonna need some commercial side for taxes.
Well, not, not necessarily, you need the density to make the development work, for the developer to even be interested in doing it.
I don't agree necessarily. I think you gotta look at your income, where is it all gonna come from?
Right, but you, the.
That's what I'm saying.
You're getting income when you're putting the multifamily housing, you're getting income, and you, these bigger houses that are going in are getting quite a lot of income, so.
Whether it's affordable, based off that, that's where the story lies.
I asked about the businesses because some of the research I've done on trying to solve this is, I think Dover and Portsmouth, um, the businesses stepped in a little more, especially with the busing and trying to get their affordable housing. Litchfield does have a problem where we don't have the businesses here to help with the cost. I didn't know if they would be stakeholders.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I don't know the Sea Coast Housing Alliance, so I couldn't speak for them statewide, that's absolutely true. A lot of the business groups have definitely jumped into this issue, uh, the BIA has definitely been a big advocate.
Some.
Business, uh, industry association.
But some of the businesses I talked to don't even bring it up, because I don't think they're aware that, that maybe they could be part of the solution.
Oh, I think they are, if you watch Sunday Morning with, uh, the gentleman that does the business review Sunday morning.
Fred Coker.
Fred Coker, yeah.
Okay.
They're always talking about affordable housing and workforce and.
Oh, they know it's a problem, but I don't know if they.
Well, that's a problem, but there's no labor source either.
Right.
Right, that's how, that's the context.
So, that's a catch twenty-two, so, you know, so maybe they need to.
And typically, it's the bigger employers who are plugged into that issue, because they're the ones struggling to find workers, so.
But I don't know if Litchfield has that, you know, in our fa- in our favor at the moment, so.
The region does, though.
Yeah, the region does.
The region is screaming for help.
But who's gonna, again, I'm looking at funding, you know, is the town gonna pay anything to help, like, you know, that's what we have to look at, right, or?
I wouldn't envision the town paying anything, I would, I would think you would wanna work with developers like Kevin Slattery, who was in here with his attorney talking about workforce housing five years ago, and he's a big advocate of, uh, workforce housing.
Yep.
But again, the funding, right, who pays?
The developer pays and get, tries to get the density to make it work.
Some of the businesses, if you have a business that wants to come into a, a place and he has no workforce, the business don't come unless you got a workforce.
Right.
Bottom line.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's nothing here to bring them. Okay, there's not, nothing here.
Well, I mean, it's, it's limited everywhere, you know, uh, the opportunities, it's challenging from a funding point of view, it's challenging to find sites. But you, you see more of it going into Nashua, or, you know, going into Merrimack, uh, there's project in Hudson. Because to your point, there's sewer, they can get the higher density, and they have the multifamily zoning already, so it's, you know, easier to get the project in.
Yep.
Um, a- and, and very often, you want a minimum size, just from a management, you know, point of view. Um, you know, managing too many smaller and scattered sites is difficult, it's better to have a concentration of units. So, that's where you're seeing it the most, um, where it's easiest. Funding-wise, it's a combination of density, and most of those projects are, are tax credit, they use low-income housing tax credits. And that's the other key piece of the fin- financing, and then sometimes they're also, you know, able to access some CDBG funding, uh, you know, some other funding source.
We just, and we don't do a lot with the master chapters, we just did the land use, right? Didn't we talk about mixed use? I'm sure we did.
Yeah.
So, we probably addressed a lot of it there.
Mixed use has some pluses and minuses, but, you know, not bad. That's what the whole, for years, before zoning, was all mixed use. Zoning didn't come until nineteen sixty-three here.
Cause I know when, way back when, um, there was an effort to try to push, you know, for zone, for zones that could be open to possibly doing workforce housing.
Yep.
And there was a lot of pushback from the town, because the town didn't like the idea.
They don't understand.
And I remember going to town meeting and, you know, people were up in arms, because, well, not in my backyard. And then I think what we, we tried to do was, we tried, we went back and we approached it, you know, doing the, um, you know, the, uh, the, what is it, the, uh?
Multifamily.
Multifamily, excuse, thank you, and sort of approached it that way and a little bit more. I think that kind of made it much more appealing to the town. I just don't know, I mean, this, I mean, I, I get, I get the idea what this, they're trying to do here. I just don't know if this is something, I, I don't know, that, I mean, that Litchfield. I just see, I think I see pushback from this. I, I know, I, 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 I don't know.
Well, in general, it seems like the only people that want to even develop any land are just the people that own. In general, it seems like the only people that want to even develop any land are just the people that own the land. As far as the rest of the town residents, they don't wanna see more houses go up, whether they're single-family, multifamily, or anything, so what's the incentive to go for this? If, if we're trying to conserve, you know, as much open space as we can?
There's two hundred acres in the south end of town, on the town line, that two developers own. And it's just a matter of time before something happens down there.
Okay.
And I don't know if it'll be, it's, I looked at it the other day, what zone it was in, and I think.
Industrial.
It was multifamily might have gone in there.
Multifamily did go around Page Road.
Back.
All the way back a couple hun- 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 hundred feet, all the way up through, it's that green line you see up there now, okay?
This is a new map, yeah.
Yep, and the orange is the indu- industrial zone.
Southern, SCI, Southern Commercial and Industrial, yeah.
Okay.
So is that what it, is that what the incentive is here is to, so that we have this kind of plan in place if someone comes in to try to?
We have all this that the, the circumfential, the DOT owns, and at one time, I don't know if it's still true, that surplus land that DOT had, the first takers were, um.
Original.
Housing, New Hampshire Housing, got the first dibs out, I don't know if that's still the case.
Or the original owners can get it back, 'cause they took it by amendment domain, most of it, okay, they paid a certain price.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure in this case, uh, I am pretty sure that they used federal dollars to buy it.
Yep.
To buy the circumfential right away?
Yes. Which is a limitation, not insurmountable, but it's a limitation.
It's a limitation.
Um, the same thing was true with Benson's.
There's certain things that the town has already done, Mike, I mean, Mike, you look at the green strips, you got the north of the town, and you got it on the south end of town, that's what the multifamily now, that we never had, till recently, we proposed that, and that, and that's where it went. You see that it's not doing a lot, but it's okay, okay? It, it, it backing up toward the industrial zone, or something like that, where they'll have a buck, a buck bar or some, or some sort. So we provided an area, uh, Rod- the Rotterdam, we own s- we own four or five lots out there.
Twenty-five lots.
Okay, that Y, but we got multifamily around it, okay? 'Cause the loop, the, the road does not loop on one side, it just goes in, it was supposed to loop around. I know this, 'cause I was working with a surveyor in the seventies to do it. But it was supposed to loop around, but the builder got into some mix-ups. So we, it en- ended there, but we multi-fou- we allowed multi-use around it, you know?
Yeah.
So, there's some thoughts there.
We're kinda combining workforce housing with, um, a price, you know, a price point that people can meet.
Yeah.
Is this, is this charrette for workforce housing, or is this for affordable housing?
Workforce housing.
Workforce housing, so if we build workforce housing in Litchfield, is, who does it help? It's a, that's the surrounding towns mostly, other than a few companies here.
It just helps families, yeah, to move in here and then get a.
No, it helps other people come here, but does it help the workforce that's here?
We have no workforce because we have nothing.
Because we all leave, that's what I'm saying, it's back to the job thing. So even if we had, could build a hundred units of something, did we accomplish what this wanted with workforce development? Does it help Litchfield, maybe tax-wise, but our workforce?
Say we do this and we're accepted, the application's accepted, so what happens at the end of this charrette? Is it just, uh, like, we just have a plan, like, oh, we could do this one day if someone comes and asks to develop?
I would assume so, yeah, you've got a, you've got a concept around what's possible, and then what the next steps would be, would be up to the town, whether it's, oh, golly, you, this is great, we'd love to have something like this, but we need to change our zoning, so that would be, you know, a next step.
Okay.
Uh, you know, hard to say, but, uh, that, that would be my guess. I, I would imagine that part of the motivation behind this is an educational one, uh, I, I would assume.
Now, is workforce housing, would you get, um, would you get incentives, tax, uh, not tax-wise, but, um, well, we talked about it a while ago, you would have mortgages that were, were subsidized, and they had to be that way for a certain amount of time?
So that's, that's maybe, so people use, there's the affordable housing, and then people started to use the term workforce housing, and people still mean different things by those things, but there's now a statutory definition of workforce housing. And so the statutory definition of workforce housing is, um, it has to be affordable to a family of, so for, for own, uh, ownership housing, it needs to be affordable to a family of four, earning a hundred percent of the median income, which in our region is about a hundred and six thousand a year. Uh, so that means approximately a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. Realistically, you can build. Yeah, under the statutory definition of workforce housing, so realistically, you can build a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home in Litchfield. So everybody might not want to.
And call it workforce housing?
It meets the statutory definition of workforce housing. If it's renter housing, then it needs to be affordable for a family of three earning sixty percent of the median income. And that is, uh, about seventy thousand dollars a year, and that's about a fourteen hundred dol-, this is all off the top of my head, so I could be wrong, about a fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred and fifty, um, dollar a month rent.
That sounds.
I suspect that when they're talking about this charrette, they're not talking about three hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes, they're talking about re- you know, probably rental housing that's meeting that sixty percent threshold, I would just have to think that.
Yeah, I have to think that too, Mike.
Yeah.
Jay, is that three hundred thousand dollars is affordable?
Three, yeah, uh, you know, that said, I was working with another town.
I know.
Where they would struggle to get a single-family home at three fifty.
Because of the market.
Because of the market and their land costs, their land, I mean, their minimum lot sizes double Litchfield's.
Yep.
And, um, it's do- I mean, it is doable, but it's, it'll be a smaller house, it'll be a little bit more limited than what they typically build.
Because of the land cost.
Because of the land cost.
It's interesting, when we put conservation, open space design in, I thought we would, we're solving a problem, 'cause we're doing smaller lots, but all we got were small lots and big, big houses.
Which is not unusual, 'cause if you think about it, small lots with big homes is common outside Litchfield.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's what this does. Granted, we have more open space, which they're not having, in the cities and other towns where they have that, they have less open space associated with it compared to what we have, okay? And we also have less road maintenance after that cost, okay? 'Cause every, you, you drive through Litchfield, the old zoning is nothing, we got cul- cul- cul-de-sacs, two hundred feet long with one house, okay? Why? I would give that land to the homeowner and say, you plow it and maintain it and the road, okay? Because, think about it, it's not cost-effective for the taxpayers, okay? That's the bottom, the bottom line of it, you know?
And all that said, uh, that's, most of the new homes that are being built in Litchfield today are not coming in at three fifty.
Nope. That's, that was considered sprawl, if I recall.
Yes.
So our effort, if it's true, so we focus on affordability, or workforce, or something that solves both?
I think we gotta think of everything.
I know we have to think of everything, but I'm just saying we have limited, you know? So maybe a, a solution that tries to solve both.
Or work it in together.
Work them, so if we are gonna attempt to go with the land use chapters or whatever, infrastructure, it tries to satisfy both.
I know, if I went out and got a job after college, and I'm not a boo- I'm not a white collar guy, but I could not afford to live here, until I bought the house, I bought at a low, very low price, back in the eighties, okay? Today, I could never afford a house here, even with what I made working to this day, I could never afford it. Between my wife, wife and I, so just let you know, the mortgage is ridiculous, then the taxes.
Wait, that's your job. Unfortunately.
It's all life, every, everybody has the same problems one way or the other.
So this, but this application doesn't cost us anything.
That's right.
And it just gives us another option when a developer comes in for proposed, you know, developments. So I don't see why not apply for it.
I mean, it's, I mean, it, it doesn't mean we're gonna win, but it means, you made a reply, but, yeah, I mean, it's no harm, no foul. Well, certainly, I, I wouldn't.
That's true.
Yeah. And it's gonna be, what, the winner will be announced April twenty-fourth, and it'll be held in the fall of two thousand twenty.
Question, what are we committed to if we win?
That is a good question, I, I, I don't know, um, I could guess, but I don't know, maybe nothing? Uh, but I, I, I would imagine they would want us to find the physical space to hold it, and to publicize it and invite people.
There was a sheet here, do you?
Otherwise, I missed that then.
It, it was after all the application part, so I think probably nobody scrolled down. Um, it says, the host community will recruit a group of stakeholders to sit in on the planning committee, which will meet roughly once a month from late April to the end of two thousand twenty. Secure a site, which will be used as a study area for the design charrette. Secure a location, where we will host the charrette team's work session, the community listening session, a community reveal presentation, and provide all technical equipment, like projectors, microphones. Um, provide breakfast, lunch, snacks, and beverages to the charrette team during the two-day charrette. Become a community builder member of, uh, of the workforce housing coalition with a donation of a thousand dollars. Skip that one, I was browsing through this.
Good catch.
Yeah, right.
Good catch on that one.
Help promote the charrette via their social media channels, down meetings, provide press contacts for local news outlets. Recruit volunteers for day event logistics setup check-in. Uh, provide site map zoning information as needed to the team, use provided promotional materials, and include the W, the workforce, oh my God, workforce housing, um, charrette, uh, force, um, in all promotional efforts, including tagging both on social media. So they want us to advertise, they want us to be a member of the coalition, and the donation of a thousand dollars.
Sounds like it's an easy win.
So we'd be responsible for that, a thousand dollars, I guess, and.
That's a lot of legwork.
And yes, the, the work behind it, right.
Yeah.
And at that point, I don't see anybody in Litchfield wanting to be a promoter of, of this, right?
That was my point.
We're not ready for this, I'll be honest with you, I don't think we're ready for it.
Not wanting to develop in general.
I don't.
I don't think we're ready for that.
And all the legwork and effort would be hypothetical, based on bigger moving parts going on.
Yep.
But we can keep in mind workforce housing and affordable housing, every community is facing that, and try to be ready for both.
Yeah, I think, I mean, irrespective of this, I think we can still talk about it, you know what I mean? Or at least have discussion about it, I mean.
Learn more.
And learn more about it.
Should try and educate the public, because the public is terrified of workforce housing.
I mean, I can, I can understand that, you know, what, I, I get it, I get it.
Misunderstanding too of what workforce housing is, that's half the battle today. You know, it's not the big sub- subdivisions, it could be narrowed down to what we just did on the Amal Circle, okay? And they did well there, I must say, I'll just say that, it's all about the money. Those houses are not as big as you may think, they're a little taller.
They are pretty big.
Well, compared, you know, the first people in town, like you, and, you know, the little ranches.
Those were there for a while, seventeen-seventy-six.
Exactly, then they put a big addition on it. So.
Okay.
Well, at least, you know, nice idea.
We can keep the conversation going.
Yeah, we can keep the conversation, I think, you know, I think this is something that can be part of that conversation, um, you know.
Keep it in the back to see if it's avail- if we can do it, if next year or something, or the year after, if it's something that we can work with and we can budget for it, 'cause there are costs associated, thank you very much with that.
So you're giving us a donation for a thousand dollars?
I am not giving it.
Okay.
Why did they call it charrette to the west? Just we're going from Portsmouth over?
Because they're seacoast, so.
Okay, Portsmouth over, got it, I just wanted to make sure.
The Seacoast base, we're heading west, okay? They need something over there, 'cause of global warming, flooding, no, it's all right.
That's it.
Looking for a place to settle.
The people over there are heading this way.
All right.
Hi. Mike, just a thought, I'm not familiar with the ma- the master plan, it's, it's, I'm familiar with it, but it's been a while since I had to sit down and read it.
Yep.
'Cause it's, it's very inviting reading, okay, there's no funny parts in it, so.
Sorry.
We'll make this one more animated.
I, I, I'm from the world, I rebuild, I've read building codes all my life, had so much fun reading those. It's like that book you got in front of you right there, Mike.
Yeah.
Okay?
It's fascinating.
Yeah, fascinating stuff. I, my feeling, we are looking at the master plan, and look at renewing it, and go through the whole, we've done a lot of it already, I understand. But we gotta look at the housing.
Yep.
And we also gotta look, look, look at bringing utilities in, okay, and how to get it into this town. Like, you know, for sewer and natural gas, everybody wants natural gas, but the density is not good for the cost of running natural gas. Okay, but this is what everybody likes, okay, so we gotta look at that pi- picture too, you know?
Yep.
So that's how I look at it, you know, being on the housing side of it, this is what everybody talks about. If it was gas, oh my God, I'm happy, you know, but.
We can look at that.
Yep. That's how I feel about it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Utilities makes it more affordable to do, that's half the battle.
Yeah, it definitely makes sense, I mean, people are gonna look at that.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I agree, I definitely agree. Um, anybody have anything else? Uh, committee reports, are there any reports, are any committees, uh, do you have anything?
No, the Heritage Commission will meet on March tenth, uh, at the town hall here, it's a Tuesday at seven P.M. And the NRPC next meeting is quarterly, will be in Nashua, Thirteenth Temple Street on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty.
Quick one, I gotta, if you go to the Litchfield what's up page, you don't see too many agendas there, dates and times.
On the town website.
And even then, it's hard to get to it, I'm just saying, okay? Somehow we can promote that a little better, especially for the NRPC stuff, I do enjoy going over and bothering them.
I think if you go to the date on the town website, like, they give me the planning board agendas to dawn it to put up, and if you click on the date, I think you can have a, not a little.
I like a monthly calendar, so you can look at a long-term, but a monthly calendar is what I'm thinking about. You know, it'd be, so we know, you go on, you're looking, there's something coming up you wanna see. At least, or you're thinking, oh, that's coming up, I didn't know, it was a lot like that, you go, you get to get to go. I'll talk to the powers that be.
February twentieth, there's a, um, CIP meeting, is that, is you're going to?
Uh, no, it's March ninth.
March ninth.
Yeah.
It was originally March second.
Yeah, that, it got moved.
Oh, okay.
Because of, um, Pat Jewett volunteer.
Oh, remind me to move the sign where it's gotta go, just the picture, she's gotta be on that wall.
Is that the daytime meeting, the March ninth?
It's at six o'clock. Um, Conservation, well, actually, uh, what should I say, yeah, Conservation will be meeting, well, we met this past month, and we'll be meeting next month, um.
March third.
March third.
No, March first, third, and sixth.
We got a more calendar right here, right? Yes, okay. The Lower Merrimack Local River Advisory Committee, I have not got a date yet, I don't know when the next meeting is, I'm not sure, I have to double-check.
Waiting for the ISO.
Yeah. That's April first, but, for me, anyway, but, not, not sure about the one. See, what other things, the CIP, we talked about, March ninth, um, and I think that's it for me. And any other business, well, actually, before we get to that, approval of the two, um, February fourth, two thousand twenty minute. And any other business, well, actually, before we get to that, approval of the two, um, February fourth, two thousand twenty minutes, did anyone have an opportunity to look at those?
I just found a small typo, but accurate, well, um, do you want me to just hand them to you? Do you want me to read them out, or no?
No.
Okay. Number one, just a typo.
Yes.
Page three. I'll hand them to you. Yeah, I'll explain them later, yeah, oh, sure.
And if, um, I'll undertake a motion to approve those minutes as amended. Have a second?
Second.
A second, do I have discussion? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes five zero zero.
Okay.
Could you appoint, um, Ron as an alternate member?
Yes, last meeting.
Yes.
Well, it was just per meeting, let's go per meeting, isn't it?
Right, I think we were.
No, we voted.
We voted to have him as a regular member.
As a regular member, okay.
Yeah, 'cause, um, Tony, um, left.
And I think I signed something.
You have to get re sworn in.
You think?
So many things.
Yeah.
Let me check the, let me check that chart.
Um, any other business, Joan, do you have anything? Go ahead. No, Jay, do you have anything?
Um, the transportation chapter we approved, I know it was recent, like, a month ago, maybe? Can we get that uploaded to the? It just says draft still, or something like that.
I didn't click.
Oh. Not on it, but like, on the description, on the, on the website.
Oh, all right, I, I, I'll get with Joan, we'll make sure.
When you go in, it looks beautiful, but it just said draft, so I wasn't sure.
We'll change that.
It was chapter five.
Future flying cars.
That's all.
The future of unmanned cars driving on the road, or you sitting in a car that's driving by itself, that leaves me to think about danger. Cause of accident, mechanical.
Yeah. Uh, does anybody have anything else that they'd like to? All right, um, I don't have anything else for this evening, so I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
Sound it.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? My second. Discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, abstained, motion passes five zero zero. Thank you very much, everyone, have a good evening, we'll see you in March.